Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council on June 18th. The sale will begin at 7:01. Our invocation tonight will be led by Reverend Jillian Lutus from the West Covina Seventh Day Advocate. And afterwards, Mayor Protem Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. One, two, three, go. All eyes, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I thank you for each person in this room who cares about the future of this city. Bless each one. Lord, I pray for the prosperity of this city and for wisdom in managing its affairs. Lord, I pray that you will give your wisdom to each person in this room so that your will will be done. Lord, I pray for each citizen in this city that you will be a guiding light to them, whatever is going on in their lives. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Everyone, please follow my lead. Ready? Let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wu.
Yep.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, do you think we can report out of closed session?
There is nothing to report.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call your attention to the item, Human Resources item on your consent calendar pertaining to membership in the California State Association of Counties Excess Insured Authority.
What number is that?
Number 10. I just want to clarify for the council and for the public that the pricing at this moment is $612,149.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, if I may, I will clarify for the record that we will be returning to closed session afterwards, so we've only completed a portion of closed session. So if you all want to stick around and get the report out after that closed session, you're entitled to.
At this time, we shall move on to our consent calendar, no, oral communication. If you would like to speak and you haven't filled out a yellow card, please fill one out and give it to our Assistant City Clerk. If not, she can call you in order and please come up when she calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call forward Viola Zhang, Ada Zhang, and Herb Redholtz, if you could please line up in the middle. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson, I'm a member of West Covina City Council. Good evening. My name is Ada. I'm in support of the incredible project that is being processed by St. Poly at the former BKK landfill. The work of opponent content that any improvement to the old landfill will require expensive disruption to the area. That is lying. The truth is that Department of Toxic Standard Control has been attempting to enter good water studies since August of 2010 with no progress. Allowing St. Poly into the area will focus the issue. Environmental impact study will process any construction. This will finally allow the West Covina community to know what they have been dealing with for so many years. Let's continue to work together to build this amazing project. Thank you for your time and support.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and all the City Council members. My name is Valna. I'm here to, tonight, to say thank you for your leadership regarding the future eco-friendly project at your leadership. Regarding the future, yes, I hope that you will condone the outrageous, racially divisive statement that continue to be made by opponent of this project through all landish social media posts on Facebook and Twitter. We must live in the city that will come diversity and all American dream of building a successful project by and for the community that will benefit to the local resident and small mom and pub business owners. We cannot tolerate those who play the race car regarding this project again. Thank you for helping unity the community as one in our community support of our future. Thank you.
Following Herb Redholtz, I'd like to call forward Renee Chavez, followed by Ray Richmond, followed by Marcia Solario.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight on your agenda, you have the budget, which is, we believe, to be a true balanced budget, which is good. The one issue I have is the fact that several employees unfortunately are going to be losing their job. In that vein, since Mr. Carmody has been here, he has told us and warned us that the city lets a lot of potential general fund money go through the cracks by way of not collecting permits for work that's being done without a permit and not collecting fines when fines are due. In that vein, I want to bring back a suggestion that I made at this microphone several months ago prior to the arrival of Mr. Carmody, and that is that I think we should take a look, a good hard look, at billboard advertising. I brought this up before, along our very busy 10 freeway corridor. And I'm talking about sensible advertising. I'm not talking about going nuts. I'm talking about sensible billboard advertising along that route. There are cities that have a similar corridor that bring in anywhere from $300,000 to a half a million dollars in annual general fund dollars. And by the way, that is without reaching into the pockets of the taxpayers. There's not really will, political will, on this council, I believe, to go out for a tax increase of any sort, and I don't know that the residents would support it. But this, to me, I think, is a relatively, it's a painless way to bring in some money to the general fund, which we desperately need. Perhaps we could, if there's interest going forward to it, perhaps you could instruct us on the planning commission to take a look at it and have a study session and hear from the public and see, you know, what the thinking is on this. But, you know, years ago, it was, it was fine to, you know, have a ban and not do it, but we need the money. Plain and simple, we need the money. I hate to see people lose their jobs. I hate to see services and community events be canceled because we don't have the dough. So this is one way to open the coffers up a little bit and bring in some money. And it can be substantial if it's done right. And again, I want to stress, I'm not talking about wild and crazy stuff. I'm talking about sensible advertising along the corridor. There's hundreds of thousands of vehicles that traverse that freeway every day, and there's no reason why we shouldn't be drawing those people through our city, getting those people off the freeway, and spending in our malls and eating in our, we're bringing in new restaurants, we're excited about it. We want to bring people in to shop and to dine in our city. And that's one way to do it. That's my suggestion. I'd like to see somebody pick up on that and at least maybe get it over to planning. We can take a look at it. With my remaining time, since we are not having an organized fireworks show this year, meaning that our police and fire and public safety resources are not going to be deployed at any kind of an event like that, I am hoping and expecting that our police and fire will be deployed throughout the city, in the neighborhoods and on the streets and wherever they have to be, because we know what's going to happen. It's going to sound like a war zone out there. And I don't care whether they're setting off so-called safe and sane fireworks, which is a misnomer to me, but, you know, there's also going to be people setting out, you know, dangerous firecrackers in the middle of the street, too. And since police and fire will not be at a particular one single event, you know, I'm sure they'll be out doing their job and protecting us throughout the city. So I'd like to perhaps hear something about that, too. But in my last 25 seconds, please consider the idea to take a look at sensible freeway advertising. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and the rest of the council members. My name is Renee Chavez, and I'm here to speak about item 18 on the agenda, the budget. I just wanted to let, well, you folks know, but let the residents of West Covina that can't come to the meetings but actually do pay attention to the live feed and then YouTube, that the budget that's going to be passed tonight is not a true picture of the finances of the city of West Covina. There's a lot of items that are still pending that have not been addressed, not, it's not even wants, it's basic needs that the city needs for infrastructure, facilities, and other items that just haven't been included. And to not acknowledge that they're there is not a true picture for the residents of the community. I would suggest that the Audit and Finance Committee, since we have some members here, ask for that list, a comprehensive list of the needs of the city of West Covina, so that you, as a city council, and the residents and stakeholders of the community actually understand really the dire straits of the financial situation of the city of West Covina, and perhaps you folks would actually look into, looking into revenue streams for the city. It's important because there's a huge hole, and unfortunately, was not created by you. I know that. Most of the residents know that, but just not acknowledging that something needs to be done doesn't fix it. Something does need to be done, and I'm looking for leadership from you folks to do that. Look for revenue streams for the city because it's important, because, again, the financial situation is not going to cure itself. And I'm hoping for leadership, because you folks are elected to represent the community, and in not actually doing that, looking for additional revenue streams and instead cutting, cutting jobs, when in the long run, isn't really going to help the major problem. It's not really the best interest of the city of West Covina. Thank you very much for your time.
Sorry, it's going to be a lot of reading. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, city staff and residents. My name is Marcia Solario, and I am here today as the recently appointed Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. As part of our newly expanded responsibilities, we are to provide the city council a report on actionable items at our recent meeting. And so we thank you for including it as part of the packet for agenda item 18. So I wanted to read the memorandum we presented right now for the audience quickly. The purpose of this memorandum is to provide a summary report on action items presented and voted on during the July 5, 2019 Finance and Audit Committee meeting. All members of the committee were present with the exception of Councilmember Jessica Shoemaker. As part of the approved agenda, city staff presented the proposed fiscal year 1920 city budget to the committee for review and file. After the presentation, city staff opened the floor to questions from the committee and residents in attendance. After much feedback from the residents and the committee, the one area of consensus was the desire to request that the Human Resources Director position be budgeted as it is deemed to be a huge increase in risk for the city to not have a designated qualified staff to that position full-time. It was also thought that the position should be redefined to make explicit risk manager duties. A motion to recommend that the city council budget, the Human Resources Director slash Risk Manager, was presented and passed with the vote of four to approve and one abstain by Councilman Castellanos. The committee appeals to the city council to direct staff to reevaluate the budget and find resources to fund this critical position. And so what's the takeaway from this report? From our last couple of meetings, including our budget workshop, we know we can't include everything in the budget. We have to make sacrifices. You have the tough choices to make, but it seems like everyone can agree we need that budget, or the Human Resources Director. And so we hope this report, taken with the residents' concerns expressed in the past couple of meetings, will be heard and properly addressed tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Jim Grivitch, followed by Therese Garcia.
Looking for, I'm waiting for my slide. All right. I'd like you to look at the slide that's labeled self-insurance. I want to talk about the importance of risk management. On the slide that you're looking at, it basically says that last year, in this one account, there was an overdraft of over $2 million. That's money that could have been spent on a lot of things. And I'd like to characterize this issue as nobody minding the store. There needs to be somebody on city staff that pays attention to risk, because if there isn't, things like that happen. And in case we don't know what's included in risk, I'd like to recite the basics. Hiring procedures, termination procedures, employee grievances, discrimination, harassment complaints, safety issues, health and medical benefits, claims paid, litigation paid. Workers' compensation needs to be monitored for possible abuse. Employee absenteeism should be monitored for possible abuse. Are employees trained and oriented towards risk issues for the city? Are employees evaluated and/or disciplined if their performance exposes the city to inappropriate risk? Those things need to be done. This year, there was another million-dollar transaction, if you recall, about an insurance settlement that was done from the reserve. So it's been a total of $3 million in one year over budget, just on this one area alone. An investment of $150,000 seems to be small. Now, there is a caveat in this. You have to hire the right person. It has to be somebody who has proven expertise in this function and has performance in the past in succeeding in reducing risk. And the next part of this is, well, what about source of funding? So I'd like to have the other, the other slide come up, which has to do with the fire department. I have spoken to this council, not the individual necessarily sitting here, but this council for three years now on one subject, which is overtime. In my opinion, this city has more overtime than is appropriate in, under any circumstances. And I'm happy to report that all of the city departments have become reasonable, especially the police department. Their overtime situation is currently fine, but there is one department that is not, and that is the fire department. And I want to be specific about this slide. I want you to compare last year with the budget. And the reason I want you to compare those two numbers, you see the expenditures are way over budget. That was the year that the previous city council, which some of you sat on, decided to eliminate Engine 4, the famous Engine 4 debate that actually lasted almost a year before it was finally decided to eliminate it. That action eliminated nine fire positions, nine full-time people. Yet, when you look at the effect on overtime, it didn't diminish at all. I can't understand how that was possible. Nine positions, you've heard over and over again that the firemen are working to staff all these vacancies, and that's why the overtime numbers are so big. Well, then, why, when we eliminated nine positions, nine vacancies, that the overtime numbers not change? I don't understand it. And I think there's excess money in the budget right now, and that, that account, every analysis I can come up with, there shouldn't be as much overtime, even in the budget. Now, we're supposed to fill all of the vacancies by July 1st, and so there shouldn't be that much overtime. And essentially, all I'm saying is, I think they can spare $150,000 out of their overtime budget to fund the risk manager. I think the money is there. And I would like to ask the council to amend the budget. And just one little, small detail, there's nothing in the printed document that says the budget that you're adopting is actually the preliminary budget that isn't attached to this packet, and I think that needs to be said somewhere, so I'm saying it now. Because it had been traditional in the past for the actual budget to be attached to this packet, and it's not there. So, and I, that's it. Thank you.
Therese Garcia, and I'd like to call Jay Richmond, if he hasn't spoken yet.
Good evening. Teres Garcia, West Covina resident. On May 21st, after many residents spoke out opposing intensive development at BKK, I heard the city attorney say these words. Once the letter of intent is finalized, assuming it is finalized, then that document would be available for public review, and that would explain to the public what the anticipated next steps would be, and the city is not committed to anything. It's simply exploring options at this point. I gave the city the benefit of the doubt. I kept checking your website for updates. I closely reviewed all the email alerts I get from the city. I reviewed the agendas of all upcoming meetings to see if anything about BKK was going to be discussed. I started paying closer attention to all various social media outlets, both those run by the city, as well as those run by private citizens, to look for any updates. Surely, someone representing the city would keep us, the residents, apprised of the city's progress in regard to this process. Not only did the city attorney state that the letter of intent would be available for public review on May 21st, but your own website touts transparency. The West Covina, here, I printed it out, "The West Covina City Council has made it a priority to foster a more transparent West Covina and is dedicated to providing its community convenient access to pertinent information on city hall functions." So here I am, thinking that, you know, you will proactively share information with residents, especially considering how controversial the BKK issue is. So I attended the last city council meeting on June 4th. I was under the impression at that meeting that the letter of intent was still in draft form, which was the last update I had heard. No updates about BKK appeared on the agenda for the June 4th council meeting. Then on June 11th, at a presentation about BKK at the public library put on by residents of West Covina to inform residents about BKK's past, present, and future, I first heard that the letter of intent had been signed by the city, not from the city itself, but from one resident who spent countless hours researching this issue and who personally made a public records request to the city, asking for that letter of intent. And later, I had the opportunity to actually review the letter, the signed letter of intent, myself. Sure enough, it dated May 23, 2019, and it was accepted and agreed by seller on May 30, 2019. So let me summarize what I just said with a timeline, so it's more succinct. May 21, city council meeting, lots of residents expressed concerns about intensive development at BKK. City attorney assured residents, once the letter of intent is finalized, assumed it is, assuming it is finalized, then that document would be available for public review. May 23, the letter of intent is finalized. May 30, both parties have now signed the letter of intent. June 4, city council meeting, residents both for and against intensive development at BKK spoke out. Council is obviously on notice that this development on BKK is a hot issue, but no mention of the letter of intent being signed five days prior. June 11, one resident receives a copy of the letter of intent that he requested via public records request. Today, June 18, another city council meeting, nothing on the agenda regarding updates to the public that the letter of intent has been signed. Did the city violate anything? Not necessarily. And let me be clear, I'm not implying that they did. The city attorney said the letter of intent would be available for public review. Did the city make this document available for public review when they turned it over to that one resident per his public records request? Yes, they did. Again, I'm not accusing anyone of not telling the truth. But did the city proactively inform the public, many of whom are on the edge of their seats waiting to hear updates about any progress made in regard to the sale of this land? Not that I can tell from all the media outlets that I'm monitoring, but please let me know if I missed something or if I'm wrong about that, because I'm genuinely asking, was there, was the public informed proactively, not just via this public records request, that it was signed? And let me be clear about the, what the letter of intent means. The fact that the letter of intent was signed by parties representing the city in St. Poly demonstrates that the city has moved one step closer to the sale and development of this land. The document does not constitute a sale or a binding contract. No one is making a claim that it is, but the fact that there was a significant update, that the letter was signed, and the fact that the city did not proactively inform the public about this update, it makes it very difficult for residents to believe that there will be transparency moving forward. So I'm just asking, why wasn't there a proactive update from the city about this letter being signed? Why hasn't BKK been on the agenda for the last three council meetings, considering that most people are showing up just to talk about that? And will you, the council, live up to your promise to foster a more transparent West Covina? We, the residents, are waiting. Thank you.
I'd like to call up Minerva Avila. After Jay Richmond.
Dear Mayor and members of West Covina City Council, it is honored to speak in here tonight. My name is Jay Richmond. Tonight, I would like to talk about St. Poly project in the formal BKK landfill. I think this will be 500 million investment that, when completed, will be the example of how a formal landfill can become safe, healthy, and green project that will honor our fragile environment. West Covina is facing a long-term fiscal crisis, and this project, I think, will be a huge economic bomb to our entire community. I think this is time that we all work together and to support this project. And I am excited that this eco-friendly project will be part of community for years and years to come. And this project will provide for greater paying jobs right here in West Covina. We need to support this entire project, and tonight, I would like to thank the city council for your leadership on this matter. Thank you.
Minerva Avila, followed by Colleen Rosati.
My name is Minerva Avila, and I am a West Covina resident. And I am here just briefly to share that we have been distributing these postcards, sharing these postcards with residents here in West Covina and the surrounding communities. And we share them with anyone who takes them. Some of you took them at the concert last week. We appreciate that. And so we are giving them out so people know and are aware about, are aware of the BKK, the development over at BKK, just to make sure that everyone is informed about what's going on. A lot of people are not, and so they're very thankful when they get the postcard and learn about this development. Some of them remember back in the days when the landfill was active. So I just wanted to share, and for those who we have missed and have not gotten one, they can visit a website, livablewestcovina.org is a great website for them to visit. Again, that's livablewestcovina.org. And like I said, it's just so that they can get additional information about what is going on. We don't want transparency issues to prohibit folks from learning more about what is up there. what is up there. And also, I wanted to briefly apologize. A few weeks ago, I accidentally took the mic with my belongings as I was moving away. I was talking, and for some reason, we were cut to three minutes. I had prepared for a five-minute public comment, and so I was cut short and had to speak loudly because apparently the mic had been cut, and I accidentally pulled it with me. So, I apologize for that. But I'm not going to apologize for my passion and for advocating on behalf of my children. I love my children dearly. They, they are my children. I think any mother would, does the same. We all love our, our children. So, I'm not going to apologize for the passion that I have for advocating on their behalf and for their help. Thank you.
Good evening. Colleen Rosati, elected city treasurer for the city of West Covina. I attended the budget workshop on June 10th, 2019. Thank you, Dave, for putting that together. It was very informative. Just a couple things that I just want to bring to the attention, excuse me, of the council. On the budget, and I'm going back by the first copy, that's what I'm reviewing from. If you look on page 47 of the budget, it says, number 169, park acquisition. It was budgeted in 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, 3.9 million dollars. We did not get 3.9 million dollars in revenue. Excuse me. So, I noticed for the upcoming budget, 2019, 20, we do show zero, but that is something that maybe should be adjusted. We, I believe we only got 500,000. I did talk to Nicole about this. We got 500,000 in one payment and another 500,000 for another, but that could be verified with her, so that might be an adjustment you need to do. Excuse me. On page 50, item number 4657, ambulance subscription fee. In 2017, 2018, it was budgeted for 15,000. 2018, 2019, it was budgeted for 13, I'm sorry. Yeah, 13,000. And then, in 2019, 20, 2020, it's budgeted zero. So, I kind of did a little research, and I know the fire chief is approaching a new policy and procedure for this. We offer this subscription to the residents for 69 dollars a year. And in the brochure, it says you can pay online, but there's nowhere to pay online. So, we need to adjust that. Dave and I have talked about it, so we can capture those funds, and I think we're losing definitely some revenue on that. My other concern is, on page 57, item number 367, vehicle replacement. We budgeted in 2017, 2018, 100,000. In 2018, 2019, 140,000, and this year, we are budgeting zero. I have some concerns about that, as far as replacement of fire, fire vehicles, or police vehicles, or code enforcement vehicles. I'm thinking that there's, that should be amended also. And lastly, real quick, the audit finance committee did have a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we did discuss, and I know Marcia's talked about it, and Jim just talked about it, the human resource position. I think it's critical that we do have a person in place for that. We tried having somebody run the finance department and the HR department in 2013, 2014, and it just didn't work. So, I think it's a very critical position. You need to relook at that before you omit it from the budget. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Okay, thank you. I, there was a couple questions. We need to, I don't know, I think I can answer this just as good as the city attorney can. It was made by one of the residents. I think Mr. Grivett said about Engine 4, when we closed Engine 4, that nine fire, police off, nine fire department laid off. No, we didn't lay any, or, yeah, we have, but they still stayed working. Okay, we eliminated the positions on Engine 4, but they were still employed by the fire department. Yes, nobody got laid off.
No, I, I said the positions were eliminated. They were banked and eliminated. That's why I said.
Fire chief, would you please come?
So, yes, with the closure of Engine 4, no, no personnel walked out the door, per se, and it was a total of six positions on the day of Engine 4. And I was going to clarify that with any other questions. We had lost three positions earlier on the ladder company with the restructuring of Engine 4. The nine positions were broken down to three remained with the ladder increasing its capability, and then the additional six were positions cut out of the, cut out of the fleet completely. And then, was there anything else you want while I was up here?
Okay, I think, James asking about overtime. Can you explain to the resident how about overtime? And I said, you know, last time we, in the budget, I already asked about why you, okay, budget 2.1 million dollars. Okay, if we, okay, already filled up all the positions, and hopefully, we can reduce overtime, so those money can go to some other places, maybe increasing, okay, the higher or, or some other issue, rather than going to our general fund. So, maybe you could explain to the resident.
Yes, yes, I was taking notes during, during all your questions, sir. And basically, to start off with explaining how Engine 4 didn't decrease overtime with a big, sharp drop-off, which was expected, was the, the six spots, not nine immediately, was what was actually eliminated. So, the three previous spots was actually dropped off the year before, when the, those spots were taken off the truck company in 2016. We had 13 vacancies at the time of Engine 4's cut, so as you can imagine, it was even half the amount of vacancies that we had in the fleet. Since then, or, or leading up to that cut, we had, we didn't have a recruitment, we didn't have people being onboarded under the reasoning, from what I understand from the previous leadership, is that they didn't want to onboard somebody with a staffing model up in the air and possibly look up layouts, or look out layoffs. Those 13 vacancies was then cut down to seven immediately, but with those seven, there's still a significant amount of overtime for seven vacancies, as well as, we didn't have, we couldn't get anyone hired. So, the previous administration of the fire department put on, I think, about three recruitment tests, wasn't able to onboard a significant amount of people we've got to. But we also lost about three to four members over that same time period to other departments and people going for other agencies. Yes, sir?
Thank you, chief. Okay, but, but I think, okay, we go back to the overtime quickly.
Yes.
Okay, as I think we already talked about July 1st, you're going to fill up 71 positions beside your position, you are acting chief currently. So, so in that way, I think, okay, we saw full staff. Okay, I think we have a chance, okay, to reduce overtime. I think that's what people, residents, so worried about, because right now, we just, okay, dollar to dollar, we want to make sure, okay, we don't, we don't want to waste the money.
Yes.
And so, would you please, as a chief right now, to conserve about all these issues, so you fill up position and really can reduce overtime, can show to our resident, okay, and with our current, I think, morale going up big time, and you guys doing a good job, but at the same time, let's reduce overtime.
Yes, and that's, that is my plan. So, the way I got to the number that, that was presented in this year's budget, was we took a, kind of a scientific approach, instead of just guessing or letting, you know, trying to make a number fit. We took a 10-year average of all overtime spent in the fire department every year, back to 2009, took out the vacancy costs, so now it's only the, the people who have to be filled. Someone calls in sick, someone has to fill behind them. When I add up all those hours outside of the vacancies, add back in one spot, that's my spot while I'm, while I'm here in the acting chief spot, that's what brings us back up to that 2.1. And that's just the result of having, you know, X number of vacation hours afforded through collective bargaining, bereavement, things that come up. And the 10-year average is trying to give us a big picture of, you know, what happens throughout the entire long-term span for things like injuries and stuff that might peak one year versus the other. So, yes, the 2.1 million dollars could be lower this year, but I for sure did not want to present a number and then come back here in May and, and have to explain how it could have possibly gone over. Other options that could potentially free up a little bit of money if we had to get down to it involve what would happen to me when I do go back to the ranks after my time's done. If there was another option, it could be there, but as of right now, we don't have any budgeted spots for me to fill, if I were to fill that spot with a vacancy or a new hire. There are, those options could be looked at, but as far as this number, is it's a sound number. We got to it through the, you know, the scientific method, really is how we got to, using those long averages. And then, any other direct questions about just how we got to the number? Thanks, sir. Yes?
Can you also, because I know that your overtime this last year was like 3.6. So, I think it's important when somebody sees the number 2.1, that's already 1.5, that they're looking at being gone. And so, I appreciate that you look, you know, you took the long-distance view of it. Of course, the number still is a little bit skewed because of high overtime in the last few years, but I'm not going to argue with that. I think it's important to note that they have taken the proactive approach. They're seeing that, okay, if we're back up to our 76 that we need to be at, this is a reasonable number for us.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and if there's any direct questions, I have the actual overtime expenses for the last 10 years in front of me, and, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there was a question brought up by, oh, a young lady in the residence about, or did you have a question for? Oh, okay. About the letter of intent for the BKK sale. She probably know what I'm going to ask, which we would like to know, is on the authority of who has the right to sign it without going for the council. For those as a council, I have to do it. Okay.
Mayor, if I may, loud and clear, we hear the question that people want to be kept informed of what's happening with the proposed development and the letter of intent. We have a section in our economic development webpage which is project descriptions and site plans. This letter of intent is, is now posted there, so we could find it this evening. We also have a frequently asked questions section that answers a lot of the questions that, that staff has been receiving. And there's also a, an open field there if people want to ask further specific questions. Our economic development manager will get back to those people directly, and will continue to post information on that section of our city webpage.
But I think the question was, on the what authority, who has the authority? Do you have the sole authority without coming to the council to sign that letter of intent, or what?
Correct. That was an item that was considered by the council as a real property negotiation, and the council directed the, the city manager to negotiate and execute our letter of intent. That was disclosed when the council came out of the closed session that evening.
I must be misunderstanding. I want council members, Shoemaker to ask a question.
Okay, I'm not sure that this is a question that should be asked in public, because, quite frankly, this, I was last told that, that we were negotiating the final. So, why am I finding out from a resident that we've entered into the letter of intent?
Well, I need to do a better job of explaining, and I apologize that you're hearing it for the first time tonight, because that was the council's authority and direction to me, and certainly, you should have had a copy before now.
You would think so, considering this is a controversial situation, and we need to be able to show what steps are being taken, and when the city attorney lays out specific steps on what's going to happen, we need to keep our word, period. And I apologize that that didn't happen. And I can only say, it's embarrassing to me to admit that I didn't know, that I had been waiting to find out that it had been executed.
Thank you. And what I, I would like to say for council member Shoemaker, you know what? As a council, we say we want to be more transparent. I think this has been more transparent than we've been in the past. The questions are asked, we could have asked in closed session, but we brought it out here where everybody could hear the question and hear the answer, and I want to thank her for bringing that question up. Okay, that to be the end of the oral communication. Now, we should move to consent calendar. I know we have, only have one item to be polled, which is item number six, and that's by council member Shoemaker, who's going to have a motion to accept number 1 through 14, excluding number six.
So, move.
You have a, I have a motion. You have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Vote call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Pass it 5-0. Okay, now, item number six is council member Shoemaker.
Okay, this item, I was surprised to see on the agenda, because as far as I'm aware, we hadn't discussed hiring additional counsel or even looking at the issue. And so, in the staff report, it says that, Mr. City Manager, you looked at three other firms. I'd like to know what three other firms were looked at. First of all, let's start there.
We got consideration of the existing office that's doing these services now, which is the city attorney's firm. We spoke with Atkinson's Rude. It's a firm that I've worked with previously on labor negotiations.
I've worked with them, too.
And they're, they're also a very good firm. And then, this firm, which is in front of you tonight, which is Lieberd-Cassidy. It's the firm that the city now uses for its employee relations consortium services, but we're recommending that they be substituted in, in lieu of using the city's attorney's office for these negotiation services. It's an agreement that's within authority, purchasing authority of the city manager, but I want it to be done on a public agenda, so the public and the council would be aware of, of this recommendation, this direction.
What's the city manager's authority on entering into contracts?
$30,000.
So, you don't plan on spending more than 30,000?
Well, this agreement puts in place on an as-needed basis. So, going forward, we'd have to have this authority in place. We could have used them immediately for the negotiations, but I really wanted to have a long-term relationship, which is why this is here.
This goes back to who requested that we look at another attorney firm and not have our city attorney continually handle what they are handling now, and what are the rates in comparison to our city attorney's office? Well, I, I don't think it's fair to have the city attorney answer that question, because this is your decision.
We, we have got comparable rates in the range of $200 an hour between the firms. We, I think, wanted, I wanted to have the city look at alternatives, because the city is now out of contract and has been for multiple years with its two major unions, and we've got the seven other unions with contracts expire by the end of this month. The, the situation that we had, I think it was time to change out the players at the table. And I think this firm, I've worked with them before, and I, I know they're very highly recommended. They're a very qualified firm. The rates are comparable.
I know they're very qualified. Again, I work in this industry. I know these firms. I was an elected official for 13 years prior to this. I'm very familiar with all of these firms. And the rates that are given to us by Lieberd-Cassidy-Witmore are not around $200 an hour. Their partners are 370 an hour. Senior counsel is about 350 an hour, and other attorneys are anywhere between 250 and 350. So, that is a difference. That said, I do believe it's better to not have one office handle all of our legal needs. And this is a firm known for personnel issues, and so I don't have a problem with them, but it goes back to several discussions we've had tonight of council being informed and decisions being made to steer a ship without our input.
Seen any other comments?
So, I just wanted to confirm. I know we have current city attorneys working on this. With this coming into play, does it mean that they're going to replace, or are we going to have double, are we paying double?
It would, it would be a replacement of the services we're now using.
And is there a maximum cap for these fees?
This is an evergreen contract, and we would pay their rates, but we didn't put in a total dollar amount. Well, I, as I recall, we could conclude it for our convenience just by giving notice, but it would run until we did so.
Yeah, but evergreen means.
I'm sorry. You, you're right. I stand corrected. It, it's not a forever contract. I hear you.
Since I'm sitting over here for three and a half years, almost four years till November, and, and the, the, really, the problem is that, okay, beside the budget, there is the contract of public safety, and I haven't had a contract for three years. Okay, I think this is the issue, and I don't know what. And I don't know what our, okay, previous city council, okay, city attorney, okay. I think they try very hard, okay? And they tried to, okay, negotiate a sitting, again, three and a half years. And listen to them about the labor negotiation. I think this, it's a time to change a different team, okay? And to have some, okay, and the companies specialized, okay, labor negotiation, okay? And hopefully, we can work with our, okay, and the fire and the police and to get the contract done, okay? I think, okay, the three years without contract for our public safety, this is really a problem for, okay, a city. Because, okay, then we don't have a stabilize of our staffing. And then we may be decreasing our, okay, probably, okay, and the safety service. So hopefully, after the budget, we can overcome. And then next thing, we, hopefully, we can have a new, okay, professional, okay? And they're very, very good at, okay, with your recommendation. And with a councilwoman, okay, Shoemaker, that know the firm, they know this, okay? They're pretty good at this. I have no idea, okay? I just depend on the professional recommendation. And hopefully, our result, okay? And I hope, okay, public safety, police and fire, they're willing, okay, to work with city. And let's find a way, okay? Let's work together, okay? This tough time, let's tie the belt, okay? Let's work together. And let's build from this. And have this, okay, a new phone with credibility and with credible our budget number. You understand, okay, our future. So hopefully, we can get this, but, okay, this contract signed. So I will have no problem to give it a try, okay? So I want to make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Vocal call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye, but there's an issue in the contract.
Do you want to? Do the chair, would you like to amend it tonight? Or would you like for us to do some more work on this one and bring it back?
Or do you want to authorize, if it's minor issues, would you like to authorize the city manager to approve an agreement subject to the approval of the city attorney? And then we could work with council member Shoemaker to resolve your issues?
Yeah, it's literally one sentence.
Yeah, minor issues.
Yeah.
Is that agreeable?
Yep, okay.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. That goes five zero. Okay, now, that's into the consent count. And now, we should move into public hearings. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say something before we begin this?
I did. So the first public hearing is the Business Improvement District hearing. And for legal reasons, well, my recommendation is that this item be continued to the July 2nd meeting. But given that we have public here, if there's anybody here from, is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak on that item? Seeing none, I would just make the recommendation that it be continued to July 2nd.
Okay, let's make a motion to delay it to July 2nd. Do we have a, I'll make a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I just have a, do we have a census?
Yes.
Okay, five vote. Okay, now, the next one, the item number sixteen, now this is a public hearing. It's set for June the eighteenth. It's at eight oh five. We should open it up. First, we should hear the, from the staff report. Then we should open it up to public comment.
So, if we may, so for this item and the following item, we've got two public hearing items. And the question that I have for the public, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on either of these items? If not, there is none. Seeing none, you can choose to accept the record, open the public hearing, accept the record of the staff report as your record, and then approve. Or if you prefer, you can hear from the full staff report.
I'll move the city attorney's recommendation.
And I'll second it. Okay, whatever you said. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Have vocal call, please.
For items sixteen and seventeen, Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, that was good enough, thank you. Okay, number eighteen is adoption of the City of West Covina Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Program Budget. Mr. City Attorney, I mean, City Manager, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This concerns the city's, council's consideration of adoption of the nineteen twenty budget. We'll give it just a moment, we can get the PowerPoint presentation queued up for you. You'll be happy to know, I know some citizens have been very vigilant and attended, seen the previous PowerPoint, I think, four times. So we've got a new one tonight. Everyone will be happy about that. Just give us a moment. Our agenda for this portion of the meeting tonight has six parts. We're gonna review the budget on an overview basis. Our finance director's gonna review the operating budget, all the funds. We're gonna give a recap of all the revisions that have been made, incorporating the suggestions of the Audit and Finance Committee and members of the public. We're gonna look at the general fund. We're gonna talk about next steps. And last, we'll be available for questions, if there are any. The budget schedule this year was very compressed. And we knew initially that when we started, we were at least five or six weeks behind. So we've begun several of these presentations with the citizens groups and with the public meeting, kind of with an apology. We didn't have as much time as everyone wanted to review the budget in more detail. I'd like to. I have no idea. It's karaoke night at council. We're all gonna sing in a minute. Okay, it's good. I like it. Is there a motion to approve? So, we did the initial presentation at council here on June the fourth. And the very next day, the council had directed that we disseminated and get it reviewed by the Audit and Finance Committee. We got some very good comments and suggestions from there. And we'll get to it in a moment. But we took those to heart and have some revisions tonight to suggest. We also likewise got some very good and thoughtful comments at a community meeting held in these chambers on June the tenth. And tonight, we're recommending that the budget be adopted with those revisions. The goals of the budget for the coming fiscal year, achieve fiscal sustainability and financial stability, to enhance city facilities and infrastructure, to enhance the city's image and effectiveness, to enhance public safety, to enhance city programs and activities, and to engage in proactive economic development. These are big goals, but just to look in terms of inside the city hall, these are on the front end of the city's agenda template. So as staff members turn in reports, they're gonna indicate as to which of these goals is being addressed and met when the items come to council. One thing to say about this budget is it's balanced. Our bywords are economy, efficiency, and effectiveness. Public safety departments are fully staffed in the front line. We believe the overtime is realistic and will be managed. The budget reduces some management positions and some management support positions. It reorganizes some city departments, for example, shifting code enforcement into community development. And it recommends that the city change some service provision, that we adopt a private sector contract model for the building and safety series and for city engineering services. With that, we're gonna ask Robin to go through the operating budget, look at all the funds on an overview basis.
Thank you, City Manager Carney. Mayor and members of the council, this slide is the same slide you've seen in the previous presentations. It shows one hundred and thirteen point one million dollars in all funds and for the revenues. On an all-funds basis, the expenditures are a hundred and eight point four million. And I wanted to point out, lost my place. I wanted to point out that during this process, we've made some cosmetic changes to the budget. One example of that is page one twenty-seven somehow got left out, which was our chart for finance of our positions, our org chart. And the other thing that's changed in this budget, and you previously approved this on the last council meeting, I believe, was there was a change in CDBG funding. So we incorporated those changes that were approved by the council into the budget. Fund one eighty-nine, there was an addition of two hundred and ninety thousand for catch basins. And there's an item on the agenda tonight for the citywide maintenance district. The consultant was recommending a pretty large reserve. And city manager talked to the consultant. And we decided to pull another eight hundred thousand out of there. And those are gonna be, those were added to the capital improvement projects. And city manager, if you would like, could expound on those if you want him to. The general fund has not changed. So what you've seen previously, we have a sixty-five point three million, sixty-five point four million. General fund budget, revenues, and expenditures are equal. And then there's been, through the previous presentations we've given, a lot of people have asked, how did we get here? How did you, first, you were off three million dollars, and just tell us how you got here. So I put up this chart, the revenues and expenditures. We started off with revenues of sixty-six point five million. There was a one point nine million transfer into the general fund from the debt service that I picked up from the previous year's budget, and that money had not come in. So I put it there. But in talking with the directors, I found out that that money coming in is only gonna be used for parks. So I took it out of adding it into the general fund, which helped balance it. And I put it into the park fund. So really, we started off with a four point eight million dollar deficit. The hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three, that's gonna come from the successor agency admin fees. And then there was some additional revenue that we added in due to the acting fire chief has some ideas on some programs that we can enhance our revenue. So that's the six hundred and three thousand dollars. We reduced salaries and benefits of full-time people by almost one point nine million. The salaries and benefits of part-timers is six thousand. And the reason for that is because there were some additions to part-time and some reductions in part-time. Our overtime, we have already reduced at one point one million from what the police and fire initially submitted to us. We added five hundred and thirty-nine thousand additional expenditures. Some of those things were like, there's forty thousand dollars in there for a cashiering system for finance. We have a cashiering system that is no longer supported, is on its last legs. And if that breaks down, it's gonna be pretty difficult for us to keep track of all the revenues in the city. Another thing was our computer replacement request from our IT department. And we added that into the budget. Here's the personnel cuts. These were all vacant positions. We saved one million dollars, just a little over a million. Our filled positions were seven hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred. Should be noted that there was also additional expenditures of six hun, well, three hundred thousand to the general fund, but six hundred thousand in total for our building and engineering anticipated costs for the consultant that we're gonna hire. The common theme when we gave the presentations was the community, the council, wanted an HR director. The cost of that is a hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred. So I've put together a slide here where we've come up with some recommendations to fund that position. And to do that, we would, there's thirty-three thousand, seven hundred in part-time salaries in HR that we're recommending that we delete. IT part-time is almost thirty-three thousand. We're gonna take that out of the budget to replace it with a full-time director. The computer replacement program that I just talked about, we are reducing it by forty-six thousand. We're gonna still buy the computers, but we're gonna keep the monitors that we have. And we'll replace them on an as-needed basis. And then there's some salary savings throughout the year that we anticipate through attrition and so on of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred. And that adds up to the one hundred and fifty. Future challenges. One thing that we know for sure is that the numbers in this budget are, you know, to the best of our knowledge right now. But we know every year that unanticipated expenditures do occur. And so, I find that's gonna be one of our challenges. We're gonna have to try to manage this budget very carefully to keep it in balance. The same thing with our revenue and expenditure projections. We need to, we hope that, you know, they're gonna be right on target. But there's always some little wrinkle that occurs during every year. I don't think I've ever worked a year in city government where there weren't some little wrinkle that, you know, we didn't anticipate. Our insurance costs, we already know, were more than we anticipated. And then again, although we anticipate being fully staffed in fire and police, I think there's gonna be several vacancies occurred during the year. And PD, from talking with the chief today, and that's gonna cause our overtime to go up if they have those vacancies. So we're gonna really try to manage those vacancies. Our legal cost is a concern. We're gonna have to manage that. And that, a lot of that comes from lawsuits that are filed against the city. So hopefully, with the risk, human resources director, risk manager, we'll be able to curtail some of that. And then our unfunded liabilities, we're, you know, we're, we know that we're not funding everything that's out there. Our unfunded liability alone in pensions is astronomical. We're looking at pension obligation bonds that will be brought back to you in the future when we get more information. With that, I'm gonna turn it back over to City Manager Carney.
This slide shows next steps. I think once this budget is adopted, the next phase of the work begins. We know that the city needs to adopt and implement whenever it can best practices in all areas, but especially with regard to compliance with environmental regulations. I think the city's got some real need to pay better attention in that area. There was a suggestion made publicly tonight that the Audit and Finance Committee might be willing to help with the question of quantification and recommendations on ways to address all manner of unfunded liabilities. Frankly, I think we'd welcome that labor if they'd be willing to devote some attention to those. It's gonna be quite a bit of work in that area. One of my dreams is that the city could begin to shift from preventive, or from reactive to preventive maintenance. So this idea of run fail, putting an asset into use and just employing it until it doesn't work anymore. That's not management, that's just responding to a crisis. The example I've cited several times is the roofs. We can't use buckets as our method for dealing with that. And tarps isn't getting it done for us. So we really need to do a better job of not acting surprised when some asset reaches the end of its useful life, be it in an ambulance or any asset that we have. I think the city needs to review its bidding practices. I think we might be able to find some economies there. This next one's big. I think the city needs to adopt alternate dispute resolution techniques, employ those whenever it can. The cost of risk management is too high. And we need to find some ways to do better in this area. I know there's professionals in this arena. And we need to begin to seek out some of that wisdom. We need to avoid and transfer risk whenever we can and every. We need to avoid and transfer risk whenever we can in every aspect of our operation, in our contracts. We need to make sure we've got the proper mechanisms in place. And finally, this is kind of a promise we all have to make. We need to adhere to adopted budget policies as we implement this budget. And with that, I believe Robin and I, and several of the department heads are here as well, are available to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you very much.
Okay, I shall open it up. Do you have any questions from the council first? If none, I'll open it up to residents. If you have any questions about the budget, and now I should turn to come up and ask a question. That's why we're opening up the public hearing. Well, I know, maybe it's not. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask, any final question before we go through this? This is it. We're going to vote on this budget tonight. If you have any last questions, you ask, I'm not allowed to ask them. I may be off a little bit. Jim, you have any questions you want to? See you none? Okay, now we're going to move forward. Any comments from the council? Please.
So I just want to make sure, obviously, the consensus is the HR director, and I know you gave some, okay, I guess it's all HR, for the budget. I mean, the budget that is currently shown is without the HR, and I'd like to make sure...
Through the chair, Councilwoman is correct. The budget as is in front of you tonight, the printed budget, doesn't reflect that. The PowerPoint slide tonight, slide 16, showed some adjustments that you could make, some revisions to the budget, the budget that would allow you to accomplish an HR director, and I am reading this, that that's something you all want to do, but you'll need to make that part of your motion. Please.
Well, I motion to have the HR part of the budget.
Do you have any more questions? If not, before we vote, before we vote on this, I'd like to say something. I'd like to tell Robin, thank you so very much. Now, you know, this was a tough budget. To come in here with a short amount of time, what, four, five weeks, whatever it was, to take a $3.7 million, actually said it was over four, when she got to looking at it, and come down, and I've asked the critical questions this year. In the last couple of years, I've been guilty of assuming, and I would say, with my expense and others, they would ask the critical questions, and I would kind of fall off, but with not having that little cushion for me to fall on, I actually read this budget this year.
It's about time.
Now, I'm being the first one, honest and saying it. I actually read this budget this year, and I went through line items. I, I mean, I had, these are my questions I had, plus I had a whole paper full that I went to the office of the city manager and our finance director, and I asked her the additional questions. The questions I asked her in the council that she didn't have the answers, she came up with the answers. She satisfied my mind. I said, would we come up with that money? And she told me we came up with that extra, almost $2 million she applied to balance the budget. So you know what? This is a true budget, and I can say for once, I can honestly feel that this is a true budget. So if there's any other questions, I make, oh, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Man, this is the first time I see you say something so nice. It's about time, okay? Gentle and nicest, okay, mayor, okay, but I concur with you, okay? And I think I want to thank the interim city managers and the interim, and our finance directors. So because every time, okay, I have a question, so I text him, and then he called me on the number in the office on Friday, okay, or Saturday. So it looked like, I know you guys working your butts off for this so many, many, okay, hours, okay, even you sacrifice your weekend and try to put this together for West Covina City, okay, trying to help us to balance this budget, and I know it's very, very tough, okay? We all understand. We have such a big city, we have so, so, so many, okay, so much of expenses, okay, and we have so many people we have to, okay, feed their hungry mouth, okay, and we need them to serve our public safety and all the service from our city provide for our resident. So I know, and the credible number is so important, okay, that people can trust, that all the staff, all the union and the resident, including the city council, can understand and trust this number, and we can find, this fundamental, the trust, the credible number, and we start from there, and to build the trust from the union and the city. And I think this is very important, and get rid of those animosity, and try to work together, and I think this is a start. So again, I want to concur the mayor, okay, regarding the hard work for our staff, for not only two of you, including all the staff, helping, okay, you guys, and to put this together, okay, and sincerely from the bottom of my heart, and really appreciate and balance this budget, and I really want to apologize, okay, for the people potentially lose their job, okay? I understand, and some people is working long, okay, term, okay, for West Covina City, and some of them, I even know them, okay? I understand, okay, this would be tough to them, okay, and I want to wish them, and hopefully, we can find a way to have soft landing, okay, find any other way, okay, if we go to, okay, contract out, and have that company to hire our staff, okay, and so they can continue, okay, to have employment. I think this, we can request the company that we try to hire, so in that way, they will continue to have job. I think soft landing is very important for our staff, especially for the long-term of employee that working for our city, okay, and especially from the building and the safety, and that they're working for us for a long time. So hopefully, the city manager can find a way for that. Other than that, and I just want to thank you guys. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget.
I have a question. Okay, do we, are we going to adopt the HR, you did already?
Oh, yes, with that motion that Councilwoman Lopez said. Yes, I'm, I'm the second her motion to go, oh, she made a motion, I'm sorry. She made the motion to accept the budget with that caveat, and I'm the second her motion.
Mayor, if I may, just so we're crystal clear, to fund the HR position, you're not intending to go into the reserves, but rather, you're directing us to make the cuts that were presented on slide 16 here tonight.
And we're going to cut, is acceptable, okay? We're not going to reduce our service or any issue?
I think the service levels can be maintained. I think it's going to require some maybe new ways of doing business in city hall, but yes, I believe we can maintain service levels.
I just want to make sure our risk management is fully taken into consideration, because this prevents a lot of issues that is coming in our city. So HR and risk management are the two.
City Manager, if I, if I could, could we amend the budget also to include the changes to CDBG and the CIP that I mentioned in the slides?
No, I don't have a problem. I'll address the council. Okay, do we have a census? Yes. Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have a call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. That's five oh, we want, thank you so very much. And that's the end of our regular council meeting. We, now, we do have to adjourn back to our closed session, and if you want to hang around, you're more than welcome to hang around to find out what we say. No, we don't have to come back. Oh, do we have any, do we have any mother maya's?
I do have a comment. There have been a lot of requests from the council, and I understand budget has taken precedent for a while, but there were some critical issues that we have been asking about, information, yes, information about, specifically for me, the building department, because, again, I'm being told that it's taking too long to process permits. It's costing people business, especially when it comes to entertainment-type businesses that need permits. So I really want the report on what's going on in that department and how we can make it more efficient. And, you know, Councilmember Lopez Viato asked about lighting and security cameras in our parks. I know Mr. Castellanos has asked for several things. There are a lot of mother maya's outstanding that I want to start seeing on our agendas.
Through the chair, if I could answer.
Yeah, yes, please do.
There's several of those requests that are pending, and it'll come to you in July with respect to the building and safety services. This is an area we're about to privatize, and I think through that contract, we'll improve response times and service delivery. I know the Assistant City Manager, who's wearing several hats still, she's been in conversation with at least one of the electronic display firms that was one of the requests of the mayor. We've got the security camera issue, we've got the parks measure A reports, so all of those are in the queue, and will be coming to you next month.
Thank you. Regular council meeting is now adjourned. We have to go back to our closed session. We will be reporting out upstairs if you want to, and we won't be coming back down here. If you want to find out, you can go up inside the city manager's office and wait for us.